I'll start the meeting with announcements. In memory of Ray Saxon, he's a former town councillor. Raymond Ray Saxon recently passed away. Ray was a two-term elected town councillor. Mr. Saxon served on the Plan Commission for eight years. He helped launch the Fishers Youth Soccer Program in recognition of his service and dedication for the enhancement to the quality of life in Fishers. Ray was awarded a key to the town in 1998. I kind of look like he was one of the pioneers within our city, and we send our condolences to his family. I want to provide an update. I want to provide a quick update regarding certain legislation to modify the council committee process. The council gave first ordinance reading back in October, and at that time, there were several challenges identified with the proposed legislation. Our council is continuing to work on the ways in which we can bring legislation forward to second reading, and we plan to do so in January. Moving on to presentations, I'll now turn it over to Chief Gephardt to present tonight's service awards.
Thank you, council. Thank you, Mayor, for having me. Tonight, we recognize two of, two officers that have served 25 years for the City of Fishers as a law enforcement police officer. I want to call forward Sergeant Angela Ellison and Sergeant Matt Simmons, please. First, I'd like to speak about Matt Simmons. Matt Simmons entered the police ranks 25 years ago next week. Along the way, he's done some other things for the City of Fishers besides protect and serve. He's been involved in field training. He's been involved in the chief's honor guard. He's also served in the school resource officer unit for our youth around the City of Fishers. Matt now is a sergeant on the late watch shift where he leads our officers to protect and serve nightly. Matt, I want to thank you for two decades of law enforcement dedication, protection, and sacrifice. Thank you. Sergeant Angela Ellison also entered the police ranks 25 years ago next week as well. She also has done things in the police agency outside of her normal duties that we ask her to do. First and foremost, she was a field training officer, and yes, they did both pass me on. They were both FTOs of mine early on, so you have them to thank. Sergeant Ellison is a foundational member of our crisis intervention training where officers are trained to deal with crisis. She also is not only a local leader, but a regional leader in our mental health and wellness of our officers from this state and beyond. She now serves as a sergeant of the day watch, where she helps to lead our officers to protect and serve. Angela, I want to thank you for over two decades of dedication, protection, or dedication, protection, and sacrifice as well. Thank you.
Ash, you'll chase him down.
Okay, moving on to Finance Committee report. I'm now going to turn it over to Council Wyngard to give Finance Committee a report.
Thank you, President Stolar. We did have our Finance Committee meeting last Wednesday, December the 15th at noon, and we covered a number of items. For recommending for approval tonight is item 7B on the consent agenda, and the regular agenda budget now, item 8, and item 9 we recommended for approval. In addition, there was discussion with our mayor and deputy mayor regarding the city hall, a new city hall, and also a new rec center, not only the, about the actual project, but also the funding of that project as well. Based upon the conversation, it looks like we'll be able to do both without a tax increase, right?
I think, yeah, and also, John, just a quick update. We will, on Wednesday, we will close on the bonds for our sewer acquisition. In the pro forma, we were looking at a 3.85% interest rate, and we were actually able to secure those bonds for 2.7?
Good.
2.7%, so outperformed what we thought we were going to do, so we're pretty excited about that.
Yeah.
Very good news. Okay, moving on to the Health Department update. Our Health Director, Monica Hells, provided the council with an update from the Health Department. That update can be found online and has been linked to our agenda. Moving on to the consent agenda, there are two items on tonight's consent agenda. Item A, a request to approve meeting minutes from the council's November meeting, and item B, a resolution authorizing the city compt, city comptroller to transfer funds. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Go ahead.
Motion by Pete. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by John. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to the Budget and Financial, 111521A, an ordinance of the City of Fishers approving a short-term loan financing for the 2022 fleet loan. Lisa?
Thank you. For the record, Lisa Bradford, City Comptroller. The item before you is the item that was brought forward last month regarding our 2022 fleet loan. As a reminder, this is contemplated during our annual budget process, and so through the fleet loan, that's how we recapitalize the majority of our equipment and vehicles, especially police vehicles. So this short-term financing is excluded from debt limit calculations because it is considered short-term obligations. As we discussed, we're going with key government finance. They are the lowest overall bidder, and so council approves, will move forward on securing the financing.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Motion approved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Pete, second by John. I'll now open it up for discussion. Any comments or questions from council members? I'll now call for a vote. All those in favor of approving say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item number nine, R122021A, a request to approve additional appropriation for, of stormwater funds. Lisa?
Thank you. For the record, Lisa Bradford, City Comptroller. The item before you is additional appropriation for our stormwater fund of $20,000. So at the time, we contemplated the 2021 budget process. We kept a lot of administrative costs flat during the year. We had some increases with that, and so in the stormwater budget, there's not a large number of funds available. The biggest is really in the Public Works Department, and we don't like to take that money out of Public Works, so we're looking for an additional $20,000. Just for reference, we were projecting revenue with matching expenditures of around $4.5 million in the stormwater fund, but we're actually closer to about $4.7 million, so we're actually $200,000 to the good, if not over that, in stormwater, so there's sufficient funds this year to cover. Any questions?
Motion approved.
I'm now going to open up the public hearing. Any members of the public wishing to speak about this matter may come forward. You'll be given three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, I'm now going to close the public hearing.
Motion approved.
And I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Crystal. Motion by Pete, second by Crystal. I'll now open it up for discussion. Any questions or comments from council members? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number 10, R122021B, a resolution establishing policy by which members of the city council may participate by electronic means of communication. This is a first reading, and I'll now turn it over to Chris.
Good evening, Council President Stolar, members of the council for the record. Chris Grisel, City Attorney. I'm here presenting this resolution approving the electronic participation policy of the council. So as this council is aware, prior to the pandemic, local governing bodies did not have the opportunity to participate remotely in public meetings, unlike state agencies, which was given the authority through state legislation. Throughout the course of the pandemic, the governor issued a litany of executive orders which relaxed the rules regarding this provision so that we could meet, you know, via Teams and through electronic participation. During last General Assembly's legislative session, House Enrolled Act 1437 was passed, which now allows local public agencies to establish a policy by which they can, members can participate electronically if they adopt a written policy in accordance with the provisions of the law that was established. So just a few things for you to understand with regard to this policy that's laid out by the state law. First, at least 50%, and I would classify this as meeting during normal times, non-emergent times, 50% of our council has to be physically present for a quorum, so no more than 50% can participate electronically at any given time. The exceptions to that are due to like severe illness or military service, et cetera. So if there is severe illness or unexpected emergencies, there is some wiggle room to have that provision relaxed. There are groupings in the state law which are considered sets of meetings. So as a council member, you would be allowed to participate electronically in two consecutive meetings, which the state law considers a set. But after every set, you would have to be required to come here and physically attend a meeting, so you couldn't be absent or participate electronically for more than two straight council meetings without, again, an exception to illness, et cetera.
You can't go to Florida for six months.
Can't go to Florida for six months, Brad. I'm sorry. Going to have to be here. In general, members who are participating electronically can vote on items. However, there are a couple items that you are not able to vote on by participating electronically, and most notably for you all would be adopting a budget, approving any kind of fee increase, or imposing any kind of penalty. During non-emergent, or during emergent times rather, when the governor issues an emergency declaration like we're in right now, or if the mayor were to ever declare an emergency declaration under his powers, then we're able to have more of a relaxed electronic participation policy like we were used to having in the pandemic, where the sets and establishments that I just mentioned to you go out the door and everybody's allowed to participate electronically. The only other nuance that I'd provide to you, and this is more of a housekeeping item on our end, but electronic participation does not mean that you get to remote in through a phone call or teleconference. Members who are participating electronically by the state law have to be seen and heard, so I would envision being able to set up a Teams meeting where you would be visually present, being able to participate in the meeting. That requirement is not the same under times of emergency conditions when the governor offers a declaration. The public access councillor has issued some guidance on this, and in general, he has said what I have just said, in that there is a specific requirement to be seen and to be heard for members participating electronically. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. As you may recall, during the pandemic, when we did remote in electronically, we did take roll call votes, and that is another requirement under this policy that if any member were to participate electronically, the clerk would automatically take a roll call vote on, and any action items so that we could have a clear understanding for the record what members participated electronically and how they voted. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions and look for your adoption on this. I will also mention that I took similar policies to our boards and commissions throughout the city and doing that throughout the continuation of next month as well, so that they do have a policy in place allowing you some flexibility moving forward during non-emergency times.
Do I have a motion to approve, Resolution R122021B?
It's just first reading. Do you have to have more than one reading?
This is, no, this is just being adopted as a policy for a resolution.
Motion to approve by Pete. Do I have a second? Second by Todd. It's now open for discussion. Any comments or questions from council members?
Would this take effect in January?
Yeah, this would take, yes, absolutely. It would take effect immediately.
Can you share just a little bit, Chris, like how that would really play out? Like, for example, in October, I think we realized that was fall break, and we had a few members unable to attend, so we actually moved the meeting
Sure.
to ensure full participation. With a provision like this in place, then would it, would we not do that? Like, how would this, like, that's a great example of a recent situation that we had.
Sure. I think it provides you with more flexibility to either accommodate what's been provided or to make adjustments. There is a procedural requirement in there that asks members of this body to notify council leadership at least 48 hours in advance, when practical, to let them know that you are planning to participate remotely because of those thresholds that are established. So theoretically, going into a weekend of a council meeting, we should have a firm understanding of who's going to be physically present or who's going to utilize this policy. And then internally, we'll also have to keep a track, I guess, of number of times that council members participate remotely so we don't go over the 50% threshold. But I think it does. It gives us more flexibility to be able to provide you all with opportunities, as busy as you are, to participate when circumstances might otherwise not allow you to participate physically here present, assuming we can meet the thresholds that are established under the policy.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Moving on to item number 11, 122021, an ordinance adding Chapter 32.61 of the Fisher City Code of Ordinances, creating an Armed Services Commission. First reading. Elliot?
Good evening, council. For the record, Elliot Holtgren, Deputy Mayor of the City of Fishers, and because it's relevant for the agenda topic tonight, also Commander, United States Navy. I'm honored to be before you this evening for first reading to introduce a new chapter to our municipal ordinance for your consideration. This ordinance would create a new commission within the city, the Armed Forces Commission. Mayor Fattis established a goal for the city to be a smart, vibrant, and entrepreneurial community, and we've used that motto as our North Star in terms of decision-making, programming, and policymaking to enhance our sense of place as a community. We believe that formalized a commission that enhances our recognition, honoring, and celebrating our military service is another step towards that vision. The purpose of the Armed Forces Commission would be to further the city and become a community in which military service is honored and recognized as a key component to our community's vibrancy, incorporated and promoted in programming, policy decisions, and protocols to ensure recognition and appreciation towards military service is woven throughout our community and understood as a critical component to our sense of place. Those serving, those who have served, those desiring to serve, and really our entire community benefiting from military service would be positively impacted by this commission. The ordinance before you details the establishment, the purpose, composition in terms of appointees, the duties, powers, and responsibilities of this commission. And I believe our city has taken significant positive steps to highlight our patriotism and our respect for service over the past several years. Our Veterans Day, Memorial Day services have grown in quality and quantity in numbers of attendance each year, and is led by Commander Alwirt for those events. You walk around our complex, you're afforded the opportunity to reflect as you visit the Gold Star Family Memorial, you check out the veteran light pole banners, or enjoy the beauty of our American flag that's posted on every single light pole throughout our downtown corridor. Additionally, we've served those serving with our Hometown Help for Heroes program. To date, 38 families have known that their city has their back while their loved one is deployed by mowing their lawn and shoveling their driveways. I can personally attest to the positive impact that makes on the family at home, holding everything together while Spas is deployed, and the ability for the deployed service member, when downrange, to focus on the mission, knowing their city has their back. So all that being said, there's simply just more work to be done still, and the Armed Forces Commission enables that to happen. So I appreciate your time and allowing me to bring forward the Armed Forces Commission for first reading tonight. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
I have some questions on this. Will you be reaching out to businesses within the community to see if they can add support for this as well?
Yeah, it's a great question. I appreciate that. So one of the 11 appointees would be a nomination from the One Zone Chamber of Commerce. Did you just add to make sure the business community is involved in this commission?
Okay, so as a mother of a serviceman, I do have a request. So my son comes home for three or four weeks of leave, a couple times a year. He is required basically for his job to keep himself very well physically fit.
Sure.
I don't have the type of gym that he needs. So he has to go, he can't go to somewhere that, that will limit, some of the clubs limit the amount because it's, you know, they don't want you to offend the person next to you. He can't go somewhere like that. They've kicked him out before. So, you know, we need, you know, one of the needs that I can see that is needed is they need a gym that will give them two or three weeks membership at a time in order to help him maintain the physical stamina that he needs. The other request that I had that I found out this morning, he eats six eggs each morning for breakfast, so I need extra truckloads of eggs when this kid is in town.
Crack them open and eat them right there? Yeah. No, but President Stolar, that's a great example of the type of policy decision or program that we can implement as a result of this commission, right? So we're doing, I think, great work for our veterans in this community right now, those currently serving, and again, those desiring to serve, our kids in high school right now that are contemplating a career in service. There should be a commission, a formal commission, that can wrap our arms around those folks and help them out in any kind of way. So I think it's a great example of something that the commission would take on going forward.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know all the needs that, you know, that they have, but I do know that that is a need that my son, and we're always trying to find him a gym when he comes home that he can go work out at.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Great point.
Do we have any other comments or questions?
Motion for first reading.
May I make a quick comment? I just wanted to say thank you to Commander Alwirt and you Deputy Mayor Holtgren for working on this. It's hard to create a new commission from scratch, but this is, I'm very enthusiastic about how it can enhance our community and, and honor our servicemen and women. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, so we have first reading. Motion made by Pete. Do we have any other questions? Oh, did you have anything?
I was gonna second. I just think it's great, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Elliot.
Appreciate it.
Moving on to planning and zoning, item number 12, 111521E, an ordinance amending Chapter 156 of the City of Fishers Code of Ordinances. Jason?
Good afternoon, good, good evening, council. For the record, Jason Taylor, Director of Engineering. This is the final reading for the impact fees, the road and bridge impact fee amendment. As we discussed at the last reading, that essentially every five years, the city is required to update the impact fees. At the last council meeting, we also discussed a range that we would, had presented to you, and that range was between, for the road impact fees to be increased in, sorry about the, $370 per trip and $420 per trip for the road impact fee. And then for the bridge impact fees, it would be between $15 per trip and $20 per trip. Since that time, we have went back and finalized the dollars and the amount, and it is at a road impact fee of $399.42 per trip, and then for the bridge impact fee, $16.19 per trip. This went last week in front of the Plan Commission and was unanimously recommended for approval. And to also give you some information, just in comparison to the surrounding communities, we have the Town of Pendleton, their road impact fees are $932 per trip. Noble Hills, $370. Westfield's $327, and so we are in that range with our surrounding communities. I'd be happy to answer any questions for you.
Thank you, Jason. Do I have a motion to approve?
Go ahead.
Motion by Pete. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Crystal. I'll now open it up for discussion. Any questions? Any questions or comments from council members? Seeing none, I'll now call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you, Jason. Moving on to item number 13, 122021A, a consideration of a rezone from R2 to PUDR for 50 single-family homes. We have Megan. That doesn't look like Megan. For our presentation.
Thank you. Just a second.
Sorry, Ross.
Good evening, for the, for the record, Ross Taylor, Assistant Director of Planning and Zoning. Before you tonight, Faker Drinker, on behalf of Epcun Communities, is seeking consideration of the first reading for the Courtyards of Fishers PUD. This is a 22.7-acre, 50-lot for sale subdivision. It would be located northwest of the intersection of 113th and Southeastern Parkway. The developer will provide four unique floor plans with 20 different elevations. The base price range is expected between $425,000 and $650,000 with an average price of $575,000. This is a courtyard-style development, which will target our 55-plus market. Stormwater will be piped from downspouts to the rear yard of the homes, and landscaping in the common areas shall be of native species with an emphasis on drought-tolerant plants. Bit of a timeline for this. First reading of the annexation of this property is anticipated at the January City Council meeting. Architectural review at the PUD Committee and the public hearing at Plan Commission is anticipated for February 2nd, and anticipated final reading would be at the February City Council meeting, if you guys hold first reading tonight. The petitioner is here, also to provide an additional overview and is available for questions.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the city council, and Mr. Mayor. Good to see everyone. Merry Christmas. Just before I begin, I just wanted to have a couple of notes of things that I'm thankful for. One, number one, I have received notes both during, before and during the meeting from Mr. Saxon's former town council member's family, and they're very thankful for the recognition that you gave him tonight, so that was very meaningful to their family. And then secondly, I know we have, sometimes we focus on things we have disagreements on, but it's a real blessing to live here in Fishers. I told Megan as I walked in, I couldn't believe how amazing the downtown looks. It just looks terrific, and I know there are, it doesn't happen just by miracles, somebody physically did all of that, so I'm very thankful for the people, the men and women that did that, so that's very nice. This evening, we're here in front of you with first reading for the Epcun Development, called the Courtyard of Fishers. With me from Epcun is Mr. Paul Munoz, if there's any questions you have that I can't answer. Ross did a great job of explaining the, the project and where it's located. I think a couple of just notes to follow up on that. Epcun just recently celebrated their 35th anniversary this month of being in the empty nester home-building business. And as many of you might know, there's lots of builders that build all spectrums. They build each, for each and every market. They solely focus on the empty nester market. They do lots of feedback and market studies and focus groups to really understand exactly what that's all about. So hopefully, as we go through the process, you'll see that come to life in some of the questions and answers that we have, including the accessibility standards that they provide. Every home is zero, at zero, oh gosh, zero clearance, so when you walk in from the garage or from the outside, there's no stairways, you have to go up or down, and so they really focus on that as well as providing universal design options for anyone that's purchasing their homes. Most of the homebuyers are in that 60- to 75-year age group, and they're very active, so they are still doing lots of exciting things, but they do want to provide the opportunity for people to age in place. Most of their homebuyers are going to be existing Fishers residents. Their experience tells them that most of the homebuyers come within three to five miles of where the new neighborhood is. People want to, they get used to the shopping, the churches, the synagogues, the friends and neighbors that they have, and so they don't move too far away. The other portion of their market are people that are moving to Fishers to be near their children and their grandchildren. So this is a continuing, growing part of our population across the country and here in Fishers, and so they're really excited to be able to, to be able to serve that. We also have incorporated a number of sustainability measures, including drought-tolerant plant species to limit the amount of watering that's needed. We've also incorporated requirements for all of the homes to be installed with LED lights from the very beginning, and then a thank you to Ross, remember Ross's, I think, suggested including the opportunity to be able to have rain barrels attached to the downspouts, and so that's been incorporated for the first time in a project that I'm aware of, having been involved in, so that's also incorporated into this. And I think Ross really hit most of the rest of it. If you have any questions for us, we'd be happy to answer those tonight. Otherwise, we look forward to moving on to the Plan Commission. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve and Ross, for that presentation. I'll now open it up for discussion. Any questions or comments from council members?
Steve, no line. Ten-foot side setbacks, a set of five, and a rear setback to 10. I don't understand a rear setback to 10. That doesn't make any sense. They can't add a patio, they can't even put their garden out there.
Let me, I, let me, this is in Councilman Dreamer's district, so we've met with you first to kind of walk through that, but it's been a little bit. I'm going to, yeah, thank you, Ross. So if we look at So if we look at the site plan up here, if you remember, these are courtyards, so there's no rear activity behind the home. So this is a very unique situation addressing both the stormwater drainage, because the water, the problems that people have had with those side yards, with the water going into the side yards, is because where the downspouts were coming down, hitting splashpads and aiming into the side yards. Here, I'm not sure if I can do this correctly, I'm not, I'm not getting a pointer, but what we have here are the side yard courtyards, so that not, all the homes, the outdoor living is in the side yards. Ross, is there a way to be able to use this as a clicker, or I can put my packet up? Does it have a pointer? How'd you just zoom in like that? Can we do one more? Okay, well, we have to look at it kind of small here. Is there a way to, we can't zoom that. You want to just switch to this? Okay, that's better. Thank you, Ross. So these are all courtyard living, so what we have on the floor plans, you'll be able to see this as well, this is almost all glass, so this is the bedroom, dining room, home office, outdoor area here that then goes to the outside. And then the property is essentially a shared property line here. There's more than ten foot of separation between the homes, but the downspouts will have the water going out to the back, so it'll be collecting it straight down from the gutter. Most of the rainwater that gets into a side yard, if it's not coming from a sprinkler, that's shooting water into the side yard, the problems have come up, we understand, from neighbor, homes where the downspouts go straight down, hit a splash pad, and aim them towards the side yard. Here, there will be pipe directly from the roof down the downspout, and then go in a pipe out to the backyard or all the way back to where the storm drains are. As far as the rear setback, this is, these are all maintenance-free homes, so all the lawns are all taken care by the HOA, and there's no outdoor activities here in the back, back area, so that, I'll have to double-check exactly how the plot plans will look, Councilman Dreamer, but the rear yard setback is really not consequential here because the patios are already built right off the bat, and they're, they're not putting decks out the back of a home. All of the living is here on the side yard, and then the home right next door typically will only have windows at the very top, maybe possibly transom windows, so that allows sunlight in, but you're essentially creating this courtyard that's copyrighted, that only EPCON does this, to be able to allow that outdoor living right out the side. So.
Where is all this law going? And if this is the property line down in the middle, so this would be the property line five foot side setback, so this guy only has that to walk.
The, you're, it's exactly, it's a very unique situation. We're happy to talk about it as we go through the process. This homeowner here, while it's technically their lot, there's an easement for this property owner to be able to use it and maintain it. Similarly, over here, this owner gets to enjoy that five foot or so of this property as well to create that private courtyard. There's fence and gate here, and fence back here to be able to create that private area. I'll need to get a little bit more homework to understand.
Do they have a right of trespass at five feet on?
Do they have a what?
They have the right of trespass at five feet on?
It's an easement. Yeah, they grant them an easement in their Declaration of Covenants and Restrictions.
And then who maintains the five feet?
I'm pretty confident that the answer, but I'll hundred percent double-check it. I'm pretty confident it's this property owner because they're the one using it. That's just part of their outdoor living space. And I'll have to get the answer for you on how they handle, because you're right, there are at least some stormwater will come down and land physically in this area, but the, I'll have to find out how they handle that stormwater, but I know that the biggest issue that normally, normally people have is the rain, is the wind, the water coming down on the roof, and that's being sent to the back.
And in a situation, I mean, we're talking here, if you're talking about a six-hundred-thousand-dollar house, ten feet away from each other, I, I, I just, I can't accept it. We have so many problems with rainfall, and there's a few people here who'd be glad to back me up about five feet too small.
We'll be happy to continue talking with that. We, uh.
But I'm only one with that.
Sure.
As long as it's five, I'm one in private, which is the last two years I have in Wisconsin.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
First reading.
Okay, we have first re, motion made by Pete. Okay, moving on, there are no, there is no unfinished business or new business, so I'm going to open up the community comment section. Any member of the public wishing to speak may come to the podium to address the council. Please state your name and address. For the record, you will be given three minutes.
Brian Fields, eighty-five hundred Hundred Sixteenth Street, number nine eleven. Had a couple of things, just wanted to raise to attention for consideration here tonight. One is, I've really noticed as we've gotten darker earlier, has been along the Nickel Plate Trail at Hundred Sixth Street, and also, I think, up at Hundred Forty-first. It's very dark at the crossing there, and so I'm not suggesting dig it up and put in any kind of lights, but maybe some kind of motion detector lights or something like that. It's getting dark earlier, and it's going to start getting dark later, but it will get dark every night throughout the year. So just a safety concern, I've seen particularly if there's weather, we've had a lot of rain lately, and it's, it's been an issue, so I wanted to raise that as something to consider. Also, out Hundred Sixteenth Street West, past the Kroger, recently, I've seen a couple close calls, didn't involve me, of cars turning into that apartment complex that's on the left. If you're going down Hundred Sixteenth Street, there's the Kroger and Starbucks, and just past that, there's an apartment complex. There's no feeder lane there, and I don't know if there's just more traffic going on there now or something, but there've been a couple of times when it's been some very, cars kind of piling up to try to stop in time, so I didn't, thought that might be, just bring it to your attention in case there's any other roadwork going on down that way, and perhaps the need for crosswalk there, to get some of that neighborhood connectivity into the shopping areas that has been talked about. And then the final thing, just to raise, I know, talk about the community gym or center with the city hall and things, just always want to raise concerns about competing with private businesses. Here, you've got, right here in the district here, you've got three or four fitness-type places, also the Fishers District. You've got the old Sears down at Hundred Sixteenth, and Allisonville has been taken over by someone, so a lot of those businesses have come in and taken over a lot of that retail space that's provided there and made good use of it. We also got the nonprofit with the Y up the street as well, too. So just want to make sure that's a consideration or something that, you know, whatever goes in, it's taxpayer-funded. It is competing with existing businesses that do, as you'd mentioned, they provide different needs for different people. Some just need a basic simple thing, some want a big gym, some want yoga. Those different things are there because they've got enough people to do, and if they siphon off, you could lose all that stuff. So I just want to raise those issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I will check on the crossings. I'm not sure whether we have the activated lights yet, but I'll double-check on that. I'm sure Jason, Jason left, but I'll find out, because we do have where you can push-button or have an activation of the lights there at the trail, so I'll follow up on that.
Can I also second the gentleman's comment? It's near the Eller House, and there's accidents there all the time.
Going into apartments, yeah.
Very, very frequently, so it's, it is definitely a concern, I think.
Yeah, I marked that down to have Jason take a look at that, so we'll definitely follow up on those. Thank you for bringing to our attention.
Gary Levy from one-two-zero-six-six Cabree Lane. I have a very minor suggestion for the council to consider. About a month or so ago, I received a, an email from Larry in Fishers about some events, I guess with a big brouhaha about minutes, so I went, I went to the video to look at it to see what, because I was curious, and about a hundred minutes into reviewing the video, I found the event, and it was embarrassing, but everybody has a bad day, and I guess that's why humanity invented sincere apologies, and it's all over. But one thing that Councilwoman Crystal Newman mentioned that I thought was interesting and deserved a little more discussion, people, you know, this town is growing, city management and the council's done a great job growing this town, I'm proud to live here, but people take their information different ways, some reading minutes, some on the video, as she had mentioned. What I'd like to see, if you can consider this, is that when your minutes come out, if you could timestamp the major events in the minutes, seven o'clock, seven oh five, seven twenty, so if somebody sees something of interest, they can go to the video and find it without having to go an hour, hour and a half through it just serially to find the piece that they're most interested in. Very minor, just for your consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone else wishing to speak to the council, to address the council? Seeing none, I'm going to close the comm, community comment section. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Sure.
Motion by Pete. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Todd. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? If you oppose, you're here by yourself. Merry Christmas.